...tonight, and first off, we'll have the pledge allegiance and then we'll go on to the first committee. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before you sit, I think we all deserve a round of applause for Mitch Rowe. That was my moment of silence for him, Mitch. Okay, first up is the environmental affairs supervisor final letter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Mark Vinuti and Ian Smith here from the Seneca Watershed Intermunicipal Organization would like to give a little presentation.
Good evening, and thanks for having us here. First, I wanted to start out by thanking you all because Seneca County has been a loyal supporter of the Seneca Watershed Intermunicipal Organization for quite some time, and we really appreciate it. We need leadership from counties like this, and we get it. So I just wanted to tell a little bit of a story because some of you might not all know about what the intermunicipal organization is. In 2015, there was a watershed plan done for Seneca Lake by the Finger Lakes Institute and a bunch of other planning agencies. And one of the conclusions of that was that we needed an intermunicipal organization because in New York, as you all know, the local municipalities control land use and make their own regulations. So an organization that included the municipalities would be the way to go to sort of start getting things going in the right direction. So it's the Seneca Watershed Intermunicipal Organization, and the Seneca Watershed has 40 municipalities in it and five counties. So it's a lot of folks that we are working with. And so we started the organization. Because I was sitting in the wrong seat, at a certain point, I became the chair. And so I've been the chair the last few years. But what we were doing was meeting quarterly. We'd have a presentation on an important topic like septic systems and stuff like that. But we were all volunteers. Everybody had other jobs, and we weren't really getting any traction, getting anywhere, being able to bring in grant money, do projects. And so I was, we had a presentation one time by this, the watershed manager of Canada Dega Lake. His name is Brian Olveany. Some of you may have met him, but they've been going for a long time up there with an organization and a manager. And I see in these press releases that he's bringing in, you know, a million, $2 million a year in grant money doing projects around Canada Dega Lake. So he came and talked to us, our group at one of our sessions, oh, like a year and a half ago. How do they fund it? Where do they get their money? You know, what should we do? And he was great. He gave us their way of doing it, which is, they come up with a formula called fair share. And basically, it looks at different categories of what impact your town or village or city might have on the lake. And one of the, I gave you a few handouts. One of them is a letter. It says, "Dear colleague" on one side, and then there's a table on the backside with the municipalities, not the counties, but the municipalities, and showing how they all scored. So we basically had a group that met for a few months and came up with our own formula, similar to theirs, for fair share. And the categories are water usage. Are you a water purveyor? Like the, you know, the city of Geneva, Seneca Falls. What part of your municipality has shoreline? How many miles? Where is that? What portion of your municipality is in the watershed? Because a lot of them, they're not 100% in the watershed. What's your population density? What's your population, what's your property assessment? It ends up with a score, and then we come up with our budget that we're trying to raise, and then in the last column, the math gets done, and you see what all the municipalities would pay. And so what we've been doing, I've been doing in this past year, I jumped a little bit ahead of the story because I went, we were all volunteers, meeting quarterly and not getting anywhere. So we needed a watershed steward. So actually, we went and I got our Senator Pam Helming got an item in the state budget like, I guess, three years ago now, to fund this position for two years. So we had a two-year runway, basically, we were on. We were able to get this money, and we hired Ian, who's going to talk to you next. We had a process where a bunch of us, we got a lot of applications, we interviewed people, we hired him, and he's been great. It's been a great hire. So we're running, we're at the end of the money that we got from the state to fund this position. So then we come up with fair share. The counties aren't in here because we were asking the counties for at least 5,000, just as a set, and that would make, between what the municipalities are doing and what the counties do, we'd have our budget. So I've been going around, Seneca County's been in this, you know, for years. I also gave you the memorandum of understanding. I know that Seneca County has signed it in the past. We've asked people, because we're doing this outreach, to re-sign it, just to sort of remind them of what we're doing. We've asked the municipalities to, you know, pay their fair share. We did it, the town of Geneva, we put it in our budget last year, and it paid. My town, I'm a town supervisor. And then the other, the other handout that I gave you, which is, Ian's going to talk a little bit about more in detail, is the projects that are ongoing, or we've got funding applications out, that's a, it's a two-pager, and some of them are in Seneca County. So basically, we're, we need to carry our own weight now and fund this position, and we've been doing well. A number of the municipalities, a lot of them have signed the MOU. They're paying their fair share. They're getting it in their budgets, the villages for this year, this round. Some of the towns, we missed them last year, we're going to get them in this year. Some of you probably received something from me. I'll be following up if I haven't heard from you. But that's what we, so what we're doing now, we're in the middle of this nine-element watershed plan, which is going to allow us to get more funding. If you have a nine-element watershed plan, which prioritizes what you can do to improve water quality, you can go out for funding and say, here's the plan. If we do this, it's going to have this effect. And Ian's been basically running that plan, taking up most of his time these days, but doing a lot of other things, too. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, or I'll turn it over and give Ian a few minutes. So Ian.
So as Mark said, the idea here is to not just sit on your, on the local dollars and do our own projects. The goal here is to really leverage those local dollars to go get additional dollars and really do projects. So you mentioned Kevin Olveany's work. That's exactly what they're doing over there. They're taking local dollars to leverage and go get federal and state dollars. So we definitely want to replicate that. On that handout, you can see some of the projects that we currently have going on or in development. Just in the last three weeks, we've been awarded three projects. One, a research grant, looking at phosphorus absorption technology. One, a partnership with the Wine and Grape Foundation to launch a statewide certification standard for the wine and grape industry. And we just submitted another grant with the soil and water districts throughout the watershed to do about half a million dollars' worth of work. Those are the sort of things that we're trying to do. And it's really about trying to build momentum so that we can ultimately get to a point of self-sustainability and develop a program where we're just constant, well, replicating a sort of mix of what the soil and water districts do, what the research institutions at FLI do, just trying to partner and fill in gaps wherever we think we can be the most effective. As Mark said, you know, this is a home state, so there's definitely a gap that we think SWO needs to fill, and we're trying to fulfill that need. If there's any questions about the type of work that we're doing on there, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd just like to say, I'm really impressed with the projects you have going here. You know, this is, this is all great for the watershed for Seneca Lake. I'd like to duplicate it on Keogah Lake, too. This board has a unique opportunity that anything we do affects both lakes, you know, so it's a two-for-one shot, so.
Yeah, there's one that might be particularly relevant, and we're working with the, our counterparts in Keogah, C-L-W-I-O, to do road ditch assessment improvement throughout Seneca County. So some of you will probably see me and Matt in the next month or two to try to get a lot of support for that effort. That's a $1.5 million project, and we're going to try, you know, we'll take in, we need 250,000 local level to go get that 1.5. So that's the sort of thing we're trying to do with these local fundraising initiatives.
Great, could be all the help we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Ian. I have one more item for the environmental affairs. This is a resolution introducing proposed local law E of 2021, a local law authorizing youth ages 12 and 13 years of age to hunt deer with a firearm or crossbow during hunting season with the supervision of adult licensed hunter. And New York State, I think, is the only state in the country that still doesn't allow 12- and 13-year-olds to hunt. I know, where I grew up in Pennsylvania, I could hunt with a rifle in 1963. But, you know, you can hunt with a rifle, 12-years-old. I don't, with a mentor, a lot of states don't have any minimum age.
You were obviously never a middle school principal.
Well, if you get them at a younger age, you know, if they're hunting with their family, they aren't out robbing stores, you know, so. Get them away from the video games at an earlier age, and there's a lot of effects for this. Teaching young people safe, responsible, and ethical hunting practices will ensure a rewarding experience for the youth while providing quality food to families and contributing to important deer management, population control practices. This local law has been reviewed and endorsed by the Seneca County Clerk, County Sheriff, undersheriff, and county attorney in their official capabilities, their capacities. I think this is long overdue.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any comments?
Paul, I'll support your motion if you take back your comment about video gamers. 20 years of SimCity brought me here.
Yeah, that's got you here, huh?
Did they got to take the hunter's safety course?
Yes, yes. More comments? Can I have a vote for the committee? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. That's all I have. Any new business?
Yes, I'd like to be able to have this committee approve that we ask the county attorney at our next board meeting, or possibly tonight, give him direction to sign the MOU with SWO. Correct?
If you'd have to address that at the new business at the special meeting.
Or do, does it have to come out of the committee first? If so...
That would, you would, I'm sorry, yeah, you should bring it out of the committee.
Yeah, okay. So I'd like to make a motion that the committee approves signing the MOU with SWO.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Any more new business? Any old business? Environmental committee is all done.
When are you going to take this action on the hunting? Tonight or in two weeks?
It could be done tonight.
Have you done it tonight?
We could do it tonight.
We're 29 in.
Well, we already have a meeting.
Is it already on the agenda?
I don't, no, it doesn't, I think this one, we...
We have to have a hearing for it anyway.
Yeah, we have to, we have to set, so it was to be set for a hearing.
What I mean, you got to do a resolution to set the hearing.
It'll be the next cycle.
I think it's on the next cycle.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about, we won't forget about the public hearing.
Right. And it's not effective until October, so. Well, not needed until October.
Very good. Thank you, Supervisor final letter. Next up, government operation.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Supervisors support the multi-state project honoring Robert S. Dunkinson. And would Walt Gable please come up to the podium and give us a little information, please? Thank you.
I want to thank you for giving some of your committee time for this consideration. You do have a multi-page packet that is distributed. The front page of that is perhaps the single most pertinent item. I'm going to highlight just a few things. Back where I was sitting in that side of the room, there are two posters that I have prepared, and those posters give you a good visual idea of Robert S. Dunkinson's life and the greatness of his landscape paintings of the mid-19th century. As indicated in that first page of the information packet, Seneca County, New York, is the county where Robert S. Dunkinson was born in 1821. Although he only lived here for about, up to seven years, we in Seneca County can take great pride in his being the birth, this county being his birthplace county. Dunkinson has been recognized as the greatest landscape artist west of the Allegheny Mountains in the mid-19th century, and he has been recognized as one of the greatest Black American artists of all time. I have done an extensive article about his life and his artwork, and that is on the county website. There is a multi-state effort to honor Robert S. Dunkinson in 2021 and 2022. If Seneca County is going to be a cosponsor of that multi-state effort, it would seem to me most appropriate to take action, this Board of Supervisors soon, so as to be one of the early cosponsors of this effort. The Fayette Town Council has already taken such action. I drafted that resolution with several resolves, all of which, some of which, or I guess none of which, you could choose to adopt. I suggested in that resolution a year-long designation because the sponsoring group, the Rotary Club of Monroe, Michigan, where Dunkinson is buried, has called for it to be in 2021 and 2022, and that's what the Fayette Town Council has already chosen to proclaim. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if there are any, or try to answer them at least.
Give a motion, Cindy?
Second.
Yep, there you are. Supervisors support the multi-state project honoring Robert S. Dunkinson. Any discussion, any other questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Issue number two, Board of Supervisors adopt Seneca County policy 101 for 10, social media policy.
Support. Second.
Chris, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So I was actually requested to create this, a more comprehensive social media policy to be adopted by the board here. We had a very generic policy within the county policy manual, but this one outlines more in-depth purpose for the actual policy, benefits, site monitoring directives, and will ensure department heads will monitor and enforce the social media policy. And if any modifications are required, I will make them. And one of the modifications is replacing California with New York State on the last page.
I don't even see that. So I do have a few questions. Site monitoring, is there, am I not seeing it? Agency, department, social media sites? That means anybody's computer that's work, that, anybody that has a work computer, department head or IT will check computers to make sure that they're only being used for work? Is that what that statement says? Site monitoring?
Where are you at on that?
On the last page. Yeah, and, and agency, department, site administrators will review the activity and look for different daily contents of exploitation or misuse.
Correct.
So does that mean every day computers are going to be checked, or just on a regular basis? As needed?
That, it allows for a broad stance on that, so if the board's directive is to monitor frequently or infrequently, it's just, it's there in order to ensure the capacity is allowed.
Okay.
The department heads and/or IT. I can tell you that we're more than likely don't have enough time in the day to do it every day.
Unless there's a reason.
Unless something comes up, yes.
Correct. I know that there were troubles with some postings on county website, guys, so help me out if I can't remember. But I do believe that, I kind of circled it home, okay. So the contents that promote posters or perpetrate discrimination on the basis of race, creed, color, age, religion, gender, marital status, status with regard to public assistance, national origin, physical or mental disability. So there was some troubles. I know some supervisors got calls when there was something posted about inequality, possibly is the way to put it. So that will capture this. That'll be captured in here, correct?
Yes.
With that statement. Is there anybody else that has any questions?
I'm assuming we reviewed it from the legal standpoint?
This is the first I've seen it.
Oh.
So we want to review that before we move forward with that?
We could possibly vote on it out of committee and then have him review before the board meeting?
I don't want to, I don't want to delay it anymore, but I, like I said, I'll have a review done before the next, before the board meeting.
So we can take it out of committee, though?
Correct.
Correct? And then you review it, and we vote it at the next board meeting?
Right.
Correct? Okay.
If I have anything to report concerning it, I'll review it with Mr. Wagner, or et cetera, or it'll be a separate report to the board.
Okay, very good. Is the committee all set with that? You all good?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carry. Very good. Is there any unfinished business for government ops? Any new business for government ops? Hearing none? We're all set. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a few things to introduce tonight, so first of all, I will make, can I have a motion to refill vacancy in the Department of Human Services? Support. Thank you. Just for the record, vacancy committee met earlier tonight, and we've discussed all of these openings, and Chris will give you a little bit of background on about each one, and if you have any questions, we'll certainly answer them.
Okay. For this one, the vacancy was created to, due to a resignation. There's a current need to refill the position as soon as possible, and this only requires a committee-level approval.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Issue number two, refill vacancies in the Mental Health Department.
Motion.
Thank you. Have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. There's three positions here. Chris?
So the psychiatric social worker, two, is vacant due to a lateral transfer to senior psychiatric social worker. The program director of clinical services is vacant due to a resignation, as well as the typist is retiring. So all three have been identified by mental health as necessary to, for refill, and again, only committee approval necessary.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Issue number three, refill vacancy in the Sheriff's Department. Do you have a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Chris?
This vacancy was created due to a resignation, and there is a current need to refill the position as soon as possible.
Any questions on this position? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Issue number four is to refill a vacancy in the Planning Department.
Motion.
Thank you. Support or second? Thank you. Again, this is a position we discussed at the vacancy meeting. Chris?
So this position has been vacant since 2020 and was not filled during the hiring freeze. However, the position is being requested to be refilled due to an anticipated retirement. So this is a succession planning step, and it would be a committee-level approval only.
Any questions here? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Issue number five, refill vacancy in the District Attorney's Office.
Motion.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
This vacancy was also created due to a resignation. A while ago, the district attorney did not refill it initially because the courts were closed. However, the courts have reopened, and he is, he needs the coverage as I guess the hours are starting to differ from what it was before. So he's looking to refill this.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Issue number six, refill vacancy in the Personnel Department.
Motion.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
This vacancy was created due to a lateral transfer from our payroll system tech to the Employee Benefits Assistant. We do have a need to refill it so everyone can get paid. It is up to the committee approval only.
Questions here? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Issue number seven, Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one position for full-time deputy commissioner, one position for full-time senior caseworker, and one position for part-time clerk for the Department of Human Services.
Motion.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
So I just have a quick correction on the issue itself. It would be a full-time clerk.
Full-time, yeah.
So with that, I will start with the deputy commissioner. That one is due to a succession planning within the division. The senior caseworker is creating it in order to reduce the provisional and temporary appointments that we create here in the county, and it would also include backfilling the caseworker position. The full-time clerk is due to an audit that came about from the state and a recommendation to increase the checks and balances within the division.
Any questions on these three positions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. And issue number eight, Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one position for full-time dispatcher in the E-911 center.
Motion.
Thank you.
So this request is made in an effort to reduce our overtime lines, spread low the work, and reduce order-ins, and this would require a full board approval.
As Melissa talked to all of us, it's just very difficult to keep things going. A lot of overtime is being used. People are working in the 911 center are getting burned out, and it's becoming an issue as far as that's concerned, so this is why we're here with a full-time position. Any questions here? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Is there any unfinished business for the Personnel Committee? Any new business for Personnel? Mr. Chairman, we're adjourned.
Thank you very much. Next up, Human Services Supervisor McGreevy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Issue number one, Seneca County Division of Human Services to enter into an agreement with Keogah Seneca Community Action Agency, CAP, for the TANF Non-Residential Domestic Violence Services Plan and Funding. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second. Tracy?
Thank you. This is a new contract we're entering in. The state is offering $25,000 for us to do services for domestic violence victims in regards to moving expenses for storage units, transportation, clothing, phone cars, childcare, and rental assistance when they are fleeing from those situations.
Very good. Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the board? Not, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Issue number two, Seneca County Division of Human Services to enter into an agreement with Finger Lakes Area Counseling and Recovery Agency, FLACRA, for Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERAP Outreach, Outreach Plan and Funding. Port?
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
This is in conjunction with the ESG grants that we talked about the last board meeting. We've been awarded $120,000 for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I'm sure you've all seen that throughout the news in regards to what the state is getting for that. I'm sure that there'll be more funding available. That's just what we're starting off with right now. All of the information that, on how clients can apply for this will be on our website. The portal opens June 1st for landlords and/or clients to be able to go in and apply for these rental assistance grants.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the board? Not, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
I'm sorry, I have a question. I'm
Okay, go ahead. Supervisor Lawrence Eddie.
So the, the $120,000, now if they go in, and this is for renters that can't pay
Back rent during the COVID pandemic.
So I know this is crazy for me to ask, but when you go in, is there a way that you can find out if those, if either one husband or wife has been able to go back to work, or if they're refusing to go back to work?
There's not a lot of information right now on that.
I don't even know if I said it right, but
No, I, I know what you mean. In our, in our system, obviously, we check if people are getting unemployment benefits, if they're getting any type of public assistance anywhere else in, in the nation. It's my understanding, because this is all state-driven based on the monies that they're receiving. I, I think it was just issued today. It's like 3.5 billion for the, for the state. We're really not sure how this is going to be going yet, because the landlords can go on and the clients can go on. So it's, we're, we're going to have to see how, when it opens, the portal opens, how the money gets funneled through. We really don't have a lot of information. Unfortunately, we don't. I have a feeling that it's going to create some work for my folks downstairs that we're going to have to look into the systems that we have access to to ensure that they're not getting funds from other service providers.
Right, like unemployment?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. Yep. So all of the referral sources that we get, we're going to send to FLACRA so they can issue these funds. So we're going to already check that before we do that. But if they apply online, I'm not really sure how that's going to work at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. One thing I wanted to update you on too is that we just got our Medicaid weekly share rate. It has increased. Last year, we did get a significant decrease. It went from like 112,000 a week down to 87,000. We are now back up to 103,512 a week for our Medicaid weekly share. So I just wanted to update you on that because it's, you know, over $16,000 a week that we're spending for our Medicaid funds. I can tell you Haley and I anticipated that increase, so budget-wise for this year, we're fine. But I do foresee another increase in Medicaid weekly share next year.
Very good. Any other questions? Not, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Move on to issue number three. Seneca County Board of Supervisors to approve Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act contracts for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, and administrative agreements July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022 with the Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board. Could I have a motion?
Second.
A second. Yes, sir?
Yes, Chairman McGreevy. These are annual renewal contracts. This year, there was a 20% reduction on the youth funding. We hope after July 1st, when they see if there is any rollover funds available from program year 2020, there may be some, the adult dislocated worker, there was a 5% increase, but you took a 20% reduction on that. But the contracts will be prepared for county attorney approval prior to them being signed by the chairman.
Okay. Very good. Any questions from the committee? Questions from the board? Not, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Move on to issue number four. Board of Supervisors approve appointment of Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board member.
Support.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Yes, sir.
Shumson Acropi was nominated to serve a three-year term. So it's a brand, brand-new term. It's not a, an expired term. But the term begins July 1st through June 30th, 2024. So he's willing and so
Excellent.
He'll be a good addition to the board.
Very good. Any questions from the committee? Questions from the board? Not, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Move on to issue number five. Seneca County Board of Supervisors approves the 2021 Seneca County Child and Family Services Annual Plan Update for Seneca County Department of Social Services and Family Youth.
Support.
Second.
Motion and a second.
This is an annual plan update that needs to be submitted. What they have us do is submit sections for child and family services, youth, the PENS, PENS Annual Plan, as well as childcare. We submit them in pieces to the state, then they, they approve it or ask for additional information prior to the plan being fully submitted. Only at that point would the chairman then sign and approve the plan. So it's an incremental process that the state adopted a couple of years ago, and it seems to work, work better because then, then once the plan has already been, been reviewed, they know when we sign off on it that it's official. They don't come back six months later and say something has to be changed.
Good, good it's working. So. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any questions from the committee or questions from the board? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Lastly, we'll move on to issue number six. Increase office for the Aging 2021 Budget to Reflect Additional Funding for COVID-19 Crisis.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Angela?
Okay, so once again, we've received additional funding to help, this time with increased vaccinations amongst older adults and their caregivers. So we've received $6,000, so I need to adjust my budget at this point. I'm going to be back next month because today I just received six smaller grants for a little over, I think, 150,000. So I'll be back to change our budget again.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any questions from the committee? Questions from the board?
Do we, I'm sorry, Angela, do we, do we add it to the budget, but do we use it for?
Yeah, we'll, we'll use it. So it's increasing. Haley, we'll, we'll work with Haley to, to add it to the budget. We've done a lot of work already. We've registered, my staff, I think, 1,500 seniors for their vaccinations. We have a small list of people who are holding out, still waiting, so we're still doing outreach and trying to get those and their caregivers to get their vaccines. So we'll definitely spend this.
Work on their grandkids too, would you?
Yeah, we'll try.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Not, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Is there any unfinished business to come before the Human Services Committee? Any new business? Not, Human Services is adjourned.
Thank you, Supervisor McGreevy. Next up, Finance Supervisor Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman Heisen. And I'd like to call the Finance Assessment and Assurance Committee together. Number one, this finance department is authorized to pay the mortgage tax. Motion for that?
Second.
Second?
So you have a resolution before you to pay the mortgage tax for the period of October 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. Total amount of $310,579.12. This happens to be over the same time period last year of, was only $272,501.
So it's an increase, all right?
It is an increase.
That's always good news. Any other questions for Haley on that one? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Go on to number two. Haley, you're going to talk to us, or Mitch, or both of you, or your point?
The two of us. We've both
You're pointing fingers at each other.
We've been both involved in different webinars. I did want to report that we did receive our first disbursement of the $3.3 million. We received that on Friday. I have participated in a webinar that NISAC was putting on, presented by Bonadillo on some of the requirements. I think Mitch, you participated in one today.
Yeah, that NAOC did, county, or across the country, and it was very informative. Yeah.
So I talked briefly to Chairman Heisen earlier today about the possibility of setting up a working group, if you will, a few members of the Board of Supervisors that could work with Haley and I and other department leaders as we move forward to develop the budget for 2022. How much we want to put into, for, for lost revenue, how much we want to invest into eligible projects and the like. So it might be tough to do this once a month at these meetings. And again, it might be helpful to have a, a working group that could maybe, you know, meet offline a couple of times at least, exchange some emails, even if we do it by Zoom, to start to develop some options in more detail for the, the board to consider. One point of fact that I will share is that I looked, I went into Munis for 2020, and just on sales tax and gaming revenue for 2020, it's about 3.4 million under budget. So the 3.3 could potentially be eaten up just making us whole for, for revenue shortages. But the other 3.3 we think is going to come about this time next year. So in terms of looking ahead at potential eligible projects and the like, you know, so that might be one way to approach it is to, you know, be made whole for the lost revenues that we can document.
Right.
And then maybe look at the second half for some other things and as we develop a budget and, and projects. So that's just an initial thought, but I don't know if you want to
How many members did you want, you think?
It'd probably be good to be mindful of quorum requirements in terms of any of the committees and the like. So, you know, if we had, you know, maybe three, three members of the board, you know, as long as they're not all on the same committee.
Right.
Yeah.
And you got to like to spend money. That's what to be at it.
Well, and, and to be mindful that we have some reporting requirements that are coming up pretty fast. Our first report is due August 3rd. That's supposed to cover through the July 31st. And then we do have a quarterly reporting requirement that will have to be met. So we, we do have some compliance issues to be mindful of.
So if you want to contact me if you're interested in serving on that committee, let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Why don't we, can we just see who's interested now and we don't have to worry about contacting you?
You can do it if you want to speak out now. Are you interested?
I'll be more than happy to help out, as long as it's, any day that doesn't end with a Y, I can be there, okay? But no, I, I'll, I'll help out.
You volunteer then. Mike, okay, we'll see.
I'd also be willing if you needed me to.
What?
I'd also be willing if you needed me to.
The two now.
I'd like to be on it too.
We got one, two, we're up to about five here.
We'll have to check against
Six, we got.
We'll have to check against the committees.
We got interested in Mike, Joe, Mike again, different Mike, Kyle put his hand up. Dave put his hand up too? Jesus. I'd like to spend money. Dan, did you have your hand up there?
Absolutely not.
Sorry, I saw your hand go up.
Nope.
Who else? Anybody else?
I think Mike will represent Seneca Falls just fine, so I won't have to bother.
No, you got a lot more time than I would. I just wanted to set the process up and get it moving. You got more time than I, be my guest, okay? I really just did it because
Let me think about it. Oh, it's all you, Mike.
I, I'm raising
No, Paul, honest, really, you, good for you.
You raised your hand to ask your question?
I asked a question. Did, in the webinars, did they direct you guys as to how the money can be spent? Or what it can go for and what maybe it can't go for?
They did allude to a few different methodologies, and we do have to be mindful of the buckets that it needs to fall into. But there can be some creative ways of, of allocations, but
Water and sewer and broadband have been
I know.
Been clearly articulated.
And what I've read, I could be wrong, is that it's not to lower in any kind of tax rates, correct? And not to just
And it can't be put into reserves.
Yeah, correct. Okay, okay.
You can use it for water project, you know?
I'm thinking
Water sewer project.
Whoever's on the committee, I got a lot of good things for water, definitely, but yeah.
And ultimately, I believe we'll need a Board of Supervisors resolution that will spell out
Yeah.
all the appropriations.
Yeah, okay.
Can you replenish our lost sales tax revenue and our lost
Believe we can.
Casino revenues? So theoretically, if you did all that, we have nothing to do.
For the first year. Yeah.
You're ready.
We've only got a year to figure it out.
Or the other 3.3.
Yeah. But if you don't get that money, but you didn't put, you didn't put that in the budget for this year, right?
Right.
No. No, because that came, that came after the budget was adopted.
Right.
But for, for this year, how, how much did you predict, project for this year?
For
For sales tax?
For sales tax.
Casino money and
Uh, let me see if I still have that open. Well, for, for casino, in, in 19 and 20, the adopted budget was 2.5 million in revenue. For this year, we did 1.5 million, because not knowing how long the COVID pandemic was going to go on. We have received our first quarterly payment, well, it's the fourth quarter for state, but our first quarter from Delago, and that was 431,670.93. And that, that was, they're, they're more open now than they were in that quarter. So, you know, if things stay in, going in the direction they are, we will exceed the 1.5, but probably not get to the 2.5 that we had grown accustomed to before COVID.
We should add surpluses in the, this, this year's budget for sales tax and for
Yeah, sales tax, we've already exceeded our 2019 level at this point of the year. So we're on target to do well in sales tax.
Okay, that sounds positive.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, I'll get back to you guys and see how we can do it with three members or four, maybe.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all we have.
Haley, you're all done? Okay, I guess. All right, anything else to come before Finance?
One more thing. Haley, I'm sorry. Well, I'm thinking of it. So you just said that the outlet's doing good. Their revenues exceeded what they were in 2019.
The sales tax overall is.
Sales tax overall?
Yes.
Do you have it, like, can you tell us what the outlet sales tax was? Is it?
I don't have that.
But can you do that?
I, as a rule, we don't get that level of detail from the state. No.
Okay, my only thing, and again, I've said this before, is I go out there and I'm just seeing a lot of empty stores. So I hope things are going well. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Reynolds?
I think Finance is done, so, yep.
Next up, Planning Development Agriculture and Tourism. Supervisor Bernhardt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First issue in front of Planning Development Agriculture and Tourism is the Seneca County Board of Supervisors decla- is the Seneca County Board of Supervisors declares itself lead agency for the secret review of Keugus Seneca Canalway Trail Phase II Plan and schedules public hearing.
Support.
Ms. Henry.
Alright, I passed this out earlier, which is the executive summary of a plan that was prepared last year. It was prepared with a grant that we received from Tennessee Transportation Council to basically do Phase II, recalling Phase II of the Keugus Seneca Canalway Trail, basically connecting what is currently in the village of Waterloo into Seneca Falls and connecting to the Ludovico Trail in Seneca Falls. This plan was completed back in August of 2020. So the next steps would be, with the Board's support, would be to adopt the plan and then start identifying funding to move forward for design and engineering. As part of to adopt the plan, a secret review is required. As part of the plan, a Part I of a full EAF form was completed, and we've had communications with the Department and State, and they agree to the fact that Seneca County is the only entity with the authority to serve as lead agency on this project, so we would be declaring ourselves lead agent. The second round would also be to adopt the plan, we would require a public hearing, and we're requesting that that public hearing be on July 13th, that, the July Board meeting. And with the adoption and the completion of the secret review process in July, that would put us in a very competitive position to apply for CFA funding, which has recently been announced, and those applications are due on July 30th.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
I just have one. Could you please take Sam Priam off on the steering committee?
Yes.
There you go.
He was on it while the plan was being completed.
Don't lie there, that's a good thing.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the committee? Any questions from the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next issue, Supervisors authorize and direct filing of request for congressionally-directed spending request.
Support. Second.
Alright, we were recently notified through the county manager that he'd received notification from Senator Schumer's office that they are now accepting some applications for what they're calling congressionally-directed spending requests. So some thoughts had come to the surface of we could potentially use some of this funding for basically addressing unsafe abandoned properties, potentially properties that have environmental concerns on them. So we've been working on putting that together. The application is actually due tomorrow at 6 o'clock, so we're bringing it today to the committee, and I believe at a Board meeting afterwards for full approval for us to submit that application tomorrow.
Thank you. Is there a method or a reason we settled on $500,000?
I believe with some contacts that the county manager has had, that he made some inquiries about an amount that may be justifiable so, and easily fundable, so that's the direction we're going with.
Thank you.
Can it be used on Keugus Indian Nation land?
No.
Any questions from the committee? Unless you really wanted an answer, Paul? Any questions from the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Any unfinished business for this committee? Any new business? Planning Development Agriculture and Tourism is adjourned.
Thank you Supervisor Bernhardt. Next up, Public Safety. Supervisor Burnell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors approves of all the made order, and Board of Supervisors approves ability applying for the FY 2020 to 2021 statewide interoperable communication grant.
Support. Second.
Alright, so this is a statewide interop grant. We typically receive it every year. Last year, the state didn't give it to us. Basically, we all pay for this grant. Every month, a dollar twenty comes off your cell phone bill, goes to the state, and then they pass it back to the counties, and we get about 40% of that money back. So not us specifically, but the New York State counties. The rest goes to the general fund, and a small portion of it goes to the New York State Police. So we use this funding to pay for upgrades to the county's radio system. And I don't know how much we'll get this year. We typically get anywhere between $300,000 and $400,000 a year, a little bit over 400 sometimes. There are talks about adding a, another channel to, for the fire service to use, because they currently share channels with EMS, so. So once I find out how much we receive, then we'll determine the best use for that funding. But there's no local match, and it's reimbursable.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the Board? This is made in a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Any unfinished business? Any new business we brought forward? Committee stands adjourned, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you Supervisor Burnell. Next up, getting here over Public Works. Dan, you got almost as much as personnel.
Oh, I wouldn't go that far. Personnel always outdoes this one. Issue one, Supervisors accept bids for aggregate materials.
Support.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and properly seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Issue two, Supervisors accept bids for hot mix asphalt concrete.
Support. Second.
Motion made and properly seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Issue three, Supervisors authorize supplemental agreement and adjustment to the estimated expenditure for snow and ice 2020-2021.
Support.
Second.
Motion made and properly seconded.
So this is just what we do with the state then, correct?
Mm-hmm. More questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Issue four, Board of Supervisors authorize 2021 budget adjustment for increase in chip funding for the Senate County Highway.
Support. Second.
Motion made and properly seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Issue five, something we do every year, authorized lease agreement with the Friends of the Three Bears Incorporated.
Support. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mitch?
Mr. Chairman, you'll see in the resolved paragraph for a term of, and there's an underline. I met recently with the Friends of the Three Bears Board, and they have expressed a strong interest in a longer-term lease. They've been, I believe, five-year leases in recent years. We were joking around with the 99-year lease. But they definitely would be interested, and because they have, you know, between the mama bear tourism activities and now Papa Bear becoming more of a cultural center, and they've really ramped up their bandwidth. They'd be very interested in a longer-term lease. I don't know what the Board's comfort level is with the number of years, but-
Is it five right now?
Five now, yeah.
Seems like we're always doing it every year, but it was five. Anybody want to go further than five?
98?
Forty? I think they were- I think, I think in New York State, though, you can only do 20-year contracts now, can't you? Attorney?
No, there's no restriction on that.
Okay.
So I mean, a 15 to 20-year would seem to be pretty reasonable.
I'd be up for 20.
I'd be up for 20.
Okay.
I'd just worry about what happens when the Friends of the Bears dissolve.
I'll, I'll work with Ms. Ratman, but I believe that there's some language, there's some outlanguage in there if circumstances warranted it, and that would be certainly an example.
That's a definite example.
Yeah.
That's what I would think about. That group is a very dedicated group of people, but if down the road, seven years, they're not the dedication. So would this, would this go against what they're trying to do with the chamber money? Or because they're trying to be part of that chamber where people, where they hold the brochures and stuff?
I said, I don't think this would have any-
I, I think they're worried about somebody showing up here and deciding, maybe we want to sell the, that property, like somebody proposed that three, four years ago.
Yeah, that guy was interesting.
Okay.
I think we can leave it at that. He wanted to live there, right? Wanted to live in the basement, do tours up top. Maybe it was strange. Alright, does anybody want to move forward with a timeframe right now? Suppose the difference, call it 10?
I like 20.
I still like 20.
You would. You guys got to play the cheap seats, you're from there.
And a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it for 20 years.
Second.
Motion made and properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Issue six, lease of site for communication facilities. Senate County has been approached by a local internet provider expressing interest in leasing space on the hillside and Three Bears Towers. It's for discussion. Mitch?
So I was contacted recently by the company that you're working with, Mike, over in Seneca Falls. C and B, I believe, for the internet service?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they have a-
CBN.
CBN. So they have expressed an interest in both the hillside and the Three Bears Tower. For those of you that have been on the Board for some time, I believe, know that there is currently a internet provider on the Three Bears Tower now, AirXS, out of Yates County. And I've talked to Melissa to make sure, from a public safety and emergency communications front, that there would be no issues with that, so I thought I'd bring it here, let you know, and try to get a sense of if there's comfort with this. One of the things that would have to work through are the terms, particularly the dollar amount term. And the AirXS lease is 2,500 a year, at Three Bears for, you know, for comparison purposes. I would think we probably should be consistent, so. Just thought before we went to effort of, you know, drafting things that get a sense from the Board of how you feel about it.
Is this at all going to improve the service down there, or is it just same service to another provider?
The gentleman I've been talking to thinks that it will improve the service, and that the hillside tower, they probably, it's not going to be a Seneca County matter, but they think they're going to be able to improve service across Seneca Lake and into Yates and Southern Ontario County as well. And then we'll make sure when that broadband study, if we get funded from that, from that National Border Commission, we'll make, if you decide to go forward with this, we'll make sure that that gets on the map, if you will, when that, when that study moves forward.
Okay. Questions for Mitch?
This is a wireless provider, remember that. It's a wireless internet, so it's what they call a WIP, wireless internet provider. So, so just remember that. It's not, it's broadband, but it's still a wireless broadband, like a cell.
Okay. I don't know, I think you should move forward, and why not? Right?
Alright, and I'll bring, I'll bring it back next cycle then with a little more, with a little more specifics.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Moving on, Issue seven, Supervisors name responsible local official for purposes of representing the County of Seneca to New York State Department of Transportation for the Lodi Point Bridge, New York project.
Support. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Questions?
So this was a late addition, found out from Stantec, who's doing the design work for the Lodi Point County Road 136, that the DOT now requires a RLO to represent the county on signing paperwork and documents, so this would satisfy that. On a quick related note, barring a potential addendum that may go out tomorrow, the bid opening for the Lodi Point Bridge slash culvert is set for Thursday. But one of the contractors contacted Stantec, and there may be a need to adjust the plans to add some sheathing, and we may have to go back to one of the property owners that we got a release from and renegotiate that. So it's potential that there's going to be an addendum, and then the bid opening might get pushed out a week, but either way, it would, you know, even if it doesn't get pushed out, it'll be the June committee meeting that we would come, and it'd be interesting to see how the, how the bids come in. Because I think you've heard me say before with Bridge New York, it's a capped amount, and any, any amount, you know, over the funding for the Bridge New York will be on the county. And, you know, we talked about a $100,000 SAM grant being repurposed, and then one of the highlights of the state budget was the CHIPS increased funding, so we potentially have some additional CHIPS money as well, depending on how the bids come in. So, thanks.
Well, thank you for volunteering to be, yet wear another hat.
Okay.
Okay. Motion made and properly seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any unfinished business?
I saw it mentioned, Mitch does a lot of driving every day between the, going to the south, man. Cemetery, the highway department, water, sewer.
Yeah, there you go. Any unfinished business or new business? Public Works is adjourned.
Thank you Supervisor Trout. Next up, water and sewer treatment. Supervisor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're looking for updates for Hillside.
Yes, I have a few updates. The work on getting the tanks in the ground to get First Light off the sewage plant started late last week. I don't have all the details, but they hit a small roadblock in, in trying to get the tanks down into the ground, so they're on Plan B right now. I talked to Scott from First Light, and I would expect ideally by the end of this week that the First Light part of the work will be done, and then we will be able to proceed with cutting the inflow and outflow pipes and, and starting the decommissioning of the Hillside Plant. And Mr. Martin has been, his part's been done, and that part of the settlement agreement was that he's no longer considered a sewer-to-user. So we're very close. I had hoped to be able to report tonight that First Light was, was off, but should be just a couple more days.
What's, what are we doing? Didn't we hire, have somebody come in to cut all the other buildings off? Didn't we have to cut those other ones and cap all the other building?
Yeah, but I think the plan was to wait until we got First Light and Earl off, and then, and I haven't talked to Earl recently. He may very well have already started doing, I'm due to check in with him. I'll give him a call tomorrow. If there's anything noteworthy, I'll get a note out to the Board.
They're going to better get the tank in the ground, though.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're done. His buildings that he was using, he's got either tank or septic systems in already.
I'm talking about First Light.
Yeah, First Light's got two buildings, right? They got two tanks. How many permits has Earl got now, roughly? Six or seven?
I think the, I think the total number is seven permits.
Seven septic systems?
Yeah, we're waiting on, we're waiting on certifications from Mr. Martin's engineer for the installation of those systems to finalize that.
So I have a question. He has seven permits for seven different septic systems for each building? What's the, what's the permits about?
For each building, seven buildings.
I think it's, I think it might be six buildings altogether, seven permits, because the large building that had the migrant workers in it had two permits for that building. The other buildings each had one system.
So this one tank that he put in, it's going to service all the other six buildings on? Are going to go into that big tank?
No, so there's, there is a septic system dedicated to each of those other six buildings or what have you. There's a dedicated septic system. Each will have its own tank with its own leach field after the tank. They were all engineered, submitted to our office. We performed site evaluations.
You did, you inspected.
Yes, although we don't do the construction inspection, we make the engineer do that and submit a certification to our office that, so we review the plans, we approve the plans, and then his design engineer submits a certification saying, "I testify those septic systems were installed as per the plan that you approved on such and such a date." So we put that back on his engineer to do that portion of it.
And we require them to pay for our engineering services, correct?
We require.
So the property owner, we, our engineer looks, looks it over for approval?
I reviewed them.
You reviewed them?
Yeah, they were commercial systems, but they were pretty standard fare.
Okay.
Not far off from a residential system.
So we don't have a county engineer reviewing the, reviewing the-
If, if there's a septic system I'm uncomfortable, or I want a second set of eyes on, I do- If, if there's a septic system I'm uncomfortable, or I want a second set of eyes on, I do ship them out to a contract engineer, but I did not ship out any of these to a contract engineer, I reviewed them in house, so we don't really, we just have sailor, you're paying me is all.
And it's, uh, CNS engineers is who, who Environmental Health sends them to. It's in Syracuse.
Yeah, that's a good question, because I thought that we used to do, we sent everything out for septic systems, um, when we didn't have an engineer, and then when we had Jason, he did those reviews.
Well, I think, I, my predecessor, Tom Scholes, did review residential septic system designs.
Residential, but this, these are commercial, though.
They are, but frankly, the engineering of them was standard gravity flow from, the only difference is you apply a little bit of the DEC design flow. In other words, how much water do you have to count for going into the system instead of the residential design flow from Appendix 75A? Otherwise, it's building to tank by gravity, tank to distribution box by gravity, out to the leach field by gravity, and you apply the same formulas for designing the leach field, or it's how much wastewater you can put into the leach field, so, um, I've been reviewing those types of systems for 15 years or so, I was very comfortable with it.
Yeah, because we, four or five years ago, we stopped having the engineer design it and then sending the plans to Syracuse, providing and legitus and wait around. Because you should, because it's still the responsibility of your engineer to make sure it works right.
Of the person that submitted the proposal, the project.
Right.
If something goes wrong, so we'll come back on the county then.
Right, when we issue an approval, there's some information that goes out that, with that, uh, that basically says we are not responsible for the functioning of this septic system after it's installed.
Perfect.
That's on the design engineer and the installer.
Okay. Couple, okay for a couple other updates?
Yeah, um, do you have a stamp, Scott? Are you a licensed engineer?
I'm not a licensed engineer, no. No.
I know we talked about, uh, replacing Jeff with a, or Tom with a licensed engineer to save all this moving around, but.
So I, we, our, our office, Environmental Services, I mean, we do send some plans out to CNS and actually they've been very responsive. Um, they turned the plans around pretty quickly for me. Um, I think that's a change that Tom Scholes and others worked on, because the prior contract engineer hadn't been quite as responsive, I understand, in turning plans around. In my time, 16 months here or so, CNS have been very good to us. They also help us out by, to keep the bill down by, instead of using their senior engineer who bills at, say, $200 per hour to review plans, they assign them to a junior engineer. Um, and then the senior engineer, just as the, the final looksee before they stamp them approved for us. Um, you know, if we get large campground proposals, things like that, that have a lot going on, water, electric, sewer, campsite sizing, things of that nature, those are the types of plans I typically ship out to the contract engineer. Um, but run-of-the-mill septic system plans, which even these Earl Martin plans that came in, were pretty run-of-the-mill, standard fare plans, I'm very comfortable with those, so to save the county a nickel, I review those myself as long as I have time.
And thank you very much.
Sure.
A couple other, oh, sorry, go ahead Cindy.
So I, to, because we're talking about septic's, did, were we going to do this tonight and we forgot, or we're going to do it next committee?
Next cycle, I guess.
Yeah, we can't, I think we just forgot to add it, but anyway, so with the review, we can talk about it at the next committee, but think about if your department is going to be able to handle this if we pass it. Food for thought.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The formal letter to docs went out under Chairman Heisen's signature a few weeks ago. I've had one initial discussion with the, the lead engineer in Albany. We should be having a meeting, be it Zoom or otherwise. Um, the letter spelled out the financial asks for both Five Points and Willard. They were pretty considerable requests and, uh, uh, didn't get, we haven't been told no yet. So hopefully we'll have that meeting on the books soon. Heard a little bit earlier tonight about grants. Um, I probably will be reaching out to, to Pete Baker at BNL, just to touch base. Uh, Hunt has also reached out, they have a grant division, so it'll be time probably at the June meetings to have something, at least discussion, if not resolutions, to uh, move forward with grant requests. Hopefully, um, all the different things will line up, particularly the discussion with docs and what their ultimate contribution will be and in what form that's going to take. And the last thing, um, I'm sorry, I need a little more time, I had hoped to be able to update you on the fresh EDU, um, calculations based on after the first quarter for the last year and it, I'm sorry to say, just got away from me the last few weeks, but I'll be sure to have that before you, at your meeting next month, and that will be before the next quarterly bill would go out, so we do have a little more times to, to still make whatever adjustments are in order for that.
We're going to be meeting with this parks over that, because they're going to start changing, right, because they're adding more rental units and now with?
Yeah, when Haley and Caitlin and I met when they ran the, the numbers after the first quarter, that was one that we specifically, um, talked about, because last year would have been the first year with the, the first round of cabins, and now this year there's some more cabins and the pavilion. I haven't been down there to see it yet, but I know that they had submitted plans to Environmental Health, that they were going to be converting a pavilion into more of a food service type venue with restrooms and stuff like that, so I would expect that, that their EDUs will change based on the last year, and then when, this time next year, they probably will go up even more, and, um, there's a meter on both ends there. And so we've been just, and correct me if I'm wrong Haley, we, we send one bill to State Parks and then they figure it out with, uh, with the Sesslers. Yep. And I think both, that, both the state and the Sesslers prefer it that way, and it's certainly easier for us to just go off the one, uh, meter and, uh, and then let them worry about it. So, those are the things I had jotted down, I'm sorry if I missed anything that you're looking for, for additional update on.
I'm good.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mitch?
All right, thanks Mitch. Um, any unfinished, unfinished or new business? There's nothing more for the sewer water?
Okay, very good, thank you Supervisor Hayes. Okay. Many meetings, it's over with, meetings, I guess. Now we're going to go on to the, uh, or Supervisor's Special Board Meeting on public hearing. So, you need a recess or anything? Okay. Okay. First up is a, of the meeting is a, I'm going to call this meeting to order, the Supervisors for May 25th, Public Hearing and a Special Board Meeting. Okay, roll call by the clerk.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Here.
Supervisor Garlic Lorenzetti?
Here.
Supervisor Brownell?
Here.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Here.
Supervisor Borst?
Here.
Supervisor Hayes?
Here.
Supervisor Farrara?
Here.
Supervisor Chronometer?
Here.
Supervisor Lot? Supervisor McGreevy?
Here.
Supervisor Heisen?
Here.
Supervisor Trout?
Here.
Supervisor Clear? Supervisor Enzlow?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please rise to pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. Okay. First on the agenda of the public hearing for proposed local OD of 2021. Does anybody want to open the, motion open the public hearing?
So move.
Okay, you have a second, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now open. Would anybody out in the audience like to address the board on the proposed law?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing, Mr. Supervisor, Chairman.
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is, is passed, is now closed, thank you. Public hearing, okay. Next up, presentation, anybody here to make a presentation? Any, any petitioners? Any open privilege of the floor? Approval of minutes? Meeting, meeting minutes? Which ones are those, Margaret, just a?
Oh, no, there's none.
There's none?
Well, present them at the
The regular meeting.
Regular meeting, okay. Need a resolution on that? The approval of meeting, meeting minutes?
No, I haven't completed a man of any minutes, and I will present them at the 11th meeting, or the 12th meeting.
Okay, won't worry about that. Reports of standing committees, we just had the standing committee meeting, so I guess we're all set on that too. Reports of special committees, if anybody wants to address the board on the special committee meetings? Any IDA stuff?
I mean, I thought we were going to have a joint meeting before this meeting. Next time.
Next time.
Yep. That's it.
Okay, next, that's good. Chairman remarks? I don't really have any remarks. I would pass my remarks on to, well, Vicky, do you have anything to add?
I would just report, um, happily that our numbers are remaining low, we're getting one to two cases a day, which is very good. We've even had a couple days, days where we've had, uh, no cases. So our numbers are low, which is excellent. For vaccination clinics, very, very slow, we have, uh, clinics every Thursday, we may get 10 people, we may get 20 people, we're not getting a lot of people to come in, so I really need everybody and anybody to start promoting it out in the community, encouraging people to, to get their vaccinations. Seneca County is only at about a 50% vaccination rate, and we really need to get those numbers up. We did have a very good clinic on Friday at, um, Waterloo High School for the 12 to 15-year-olds. Um, and great, great turnout, we, I think we vaccinated 220 students, so I think that is really good. Uh, I had been disappointed with the 16, 17-year-old turnout, but the 12 to 15-year-olds, the parents are, were very good about it. Encouraged all the parents as they came through also to get their, uh, shots too, because, um, if they're bringing their kids in, they must want it too. And I'm pleased to say, I think there was only one parent that said no, and all the other parents had already informed me that they had been vaccinated, so that is very, very good. So we will continue to plug along on that. Melissa's not here, she's already left, so I'll just talk about the testing. Last week, I think we, she said we tested 10 or 12 individuals. Um, we did a testing on Monday and then on Thursday, because we started our conversion. So we're now doing testing every Thursday. The hours are going to vary this week, I think it, I can't remember what time it is on Thursday, apologize for that. Um, I don't think we have anybody signed up for this week's testing. Next Friday, which is June 4th, 3rd, whatever that is, Friday, we are doing a testing from, um, 3:00 to 5:00, and that is, um, for anybody who wants it, it is asymptomatic testing, but, uh, South Seneca Schools had also contacted us because they are having a, I think it's, is it senior class? Senior class field trip, um, that they leave, uh, real early Friday morning, and they wanted all their chaperones and students that are attending to be tested. So we have sent them the link, um, so that they can get tested, they're going to bus them up here, to get them tested so that they will have their negative results, I understand where they're going, it's a requirement of where they're going, that they have to show a negative test, so, um, we will continue to test, um, weekly on Thursdays, we'll see if there's any pickup. There is not a lot at this point of interest in testing. I don't know if that's just because more people are getting vaccinated or and the nursing homes are doing their own testing, so that's not a requirement, so. Update if anybody has any questions on anything? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I think, uh, County Manager will have some remarks, I don't want to steal his thunder on the Sampson Cemetery, he deserves all the credit.
No, no, it was a team effort, and thank you. Thank you again for the very kind remarks. A to-be-determined number of state officials are planning to come on Memorial Day to Sampson. Tentatively 1:00 PM, I'll be sure to get an email out to everybody if your schedules or interest, uh, permitted, it's possible the governor could be coming himself, I'll know, not definite at this point. Uh, so more details, uh, to come on that. In terms of the selection, and, um, a number of us watched the meetings the last two Mondays, and, um, the timeline is not clear at this point. When we know more, I'll be sure to let everybody know. Speaking of timelines, the IDA slash EDC's 10-year commitment to operate the cemetery actually, um, comes to a close, uh, at the end of next month, so the timing of this election is pretty, pretty interesting. But I would expect that there'll be a period of time from July 1 when it comes back to county ownership before the, the transition back to the state. And then the other thing I want to report on, Lafayette Park, if, if you haven't been, uh, over in Waterloo, the cannons are back. I'd like to commend Bob Stuck and his team for a great job they did on that, they, they came out really, really nice, if you haven't seen them. The other thing is that the Purple Heart Monument Project that the village, uh, did with the county's, uh, blessing, um, the last two, um, monument sections arrived and were installed today, so that pretty much completes the work over there in time for Memorial Day. We didn't talk about it, the COVID committee. I don't, I know celebrate, commemorate is not happening this year, but I, there may be some, some folks walking around and some, some modest things over there, nothing that I think, given where we're at, guideline-wise and et cetera, that, you know, we need to be concerned about, but, um, so, that's it, thank you.
And we have money in the budget to run the cemetery from July 1st till December 31st. We knew this was going to happen. Well, they did it for almost 10 years, right?
Yep.
Okay, County Attorney's remarks?
I'll reserve till next month, or the next meeting.
Communication? No communication, Margaret?
No, sir.
Okay, next up, resolutions and motions. Start off with a finance assessment assurance, number 15, Supervisor Reynolds?
A resolution adopting local law number four of the year 2021, a local law to amend the local law number three of 2020. Support.
You have a second vice. Supervisor Farrara? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, Supervisor Trout, Public Works, number 16.
Supervisor's name responsible local official for purposes of representing the county of Seneca to New York State Department of Transportation for the Lodi Point Bridge, New York project.
Support.
Second there, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 17.
Supervisor's accept bids for aggregate materials.
Support.
Second on that? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Supervisor's accepts bids for hot mix asphalt concrete.
Support.
Second there? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next up. Thank you. Next up, planning development agriculture, Supervisor Barnhart, number 19.
Supervisor's authorize and direct filing of request for congressionally-directed spending requests.
Support.
Second there? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next up. Unfinished business. What did I miss one?
I thought we needed to do the local. Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
What?
The, uh, the assessment will be under new business, I'm sorry.
We could do the, uh,
The assessment.
Cindy's, uh, resolution to sign the MOU?
That'll also be under new business.
Next up is unfinished business. Any unfinished business? We have some new business. We also have an executive session to go, go into, so.
Are we doing, uh, SUIO?
You can do your resolution before we go into that.
Right, right, and did, well, really, it's, it's Kraut, it's your committee, you want to?
Yeah, for, for the- Yeah, for, for memorandum of understanding.
Right.
You got, you read it.
I, I make a motion...
What are you going to do, under new business, a resolution, you'd say?
Right, new business. I make a motion that we give permission to the county attorney to sign a SUIO MOU that we've done for the past, I don't know, five years. Authorize the county attorney.
Support. Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, carried. Get me off guard there.
Are we going to do Mr. Gables at the next meeting?
Can we do the 12 and 13-year-old hunting bill?
Oh, yeah.
That's the next meeting.
That is the next meeting.
Oh, you have to have a hearing.
Why don't we, can we do this one here for, is this one?
Wow.
Designating the year for Robert Dukenness.
I guess we could. I don't know if we need a rule 29 or not.
No, it's already...
Well, it would make it consistent with Fayette, right? Because you did it in May, Cindy?
Correct.
It already came out of committee, so you don't need a rule.
Okay, that's what I figured.
June 1st through May 31st. So you want to do it then?
We'll do it right now. You just do it now. Who's going to make the motion?
I guess I'll make the motion that we mirror the town council of Fayette, designating through June 1st, 2021, to May 31st, 2021, Dunkinson year in the town of Fayette and Seneca County. Recognition proclamation.
Support. Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Okay, are we all done with resolutions now?
You have red, you still have a new business to deal with, the assess the special, the local law three. We had the public hearing, we have to adopt.
That's in the, is that in the agenda here? It is now.
It was supposed to be, because we needed to adopt it before the end of the month.
I thought we did already.
No, that was just...
I just had a public hearing, that's it. Right, you're talking about the public hearing we just had, so we need to approve proposed law, local D of 2021 now, under new business.
Oh, yeah, three to four.
I was in motion.
That's the local, the amend, the...
What's it under?
Yeah, I just did that.
15. Resolution adapting local law for the year 2021 to amend local law three.
Wait, you did it? We did that.
No.
That's the local law that you had the public hearing on.
And it needs to be passed tonight.
It did.
Didn't we just do that? We passed it. Just now?
I didn't, thank, thank you. Okay.
We did that.
Sorry.
Cool.
Thank you.
Let's do it again.
Sorry, Mr. Gables.
No more new business.
Amending local law of the local law.
That's the first resolution we did.
I'd like to make a motion, we open up a public meeting in the local law that we just passed in the local law from the local law.
Okay.
I don't think there's any rule, you're doing it twice, is there?
No, there isn't.
We're all done with it.
Yes.
Okay, now...
Go for three.
Cindy and Don, you can call to go into executive session.
All right, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to section 105, 1F of the New York State Open Meetings Law, and invite all members of the Board of Supervisors, the county manager, to attend. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and there may, action may come out of that. It may not, who knows? Okay. All those in favor are going to...
I don't think, I don't think he wants to be there, either, you know what I mean?
I agree.
Okay, we are back live, we're back in session of the Seneca County Board of Supervisors, and we've come out of executive session, and we would like to make a resolution right here. Supervisor Bernhardt, would like to do that resolution?
Yeah, it'll be a two-part. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a resolution under rule 29 to appoint Sue Sarenseon to the Seneca County Board of Directors for the Seneca County IDA.
Second.
Got a second there. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next up is a actual resolution. Did you give them a copy of it?
Thank you. Board of Supervisors, appoint Sue Sarenseon to the Seneca County IDA Board.
Second.
Got a second on that, Cindy, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Okay, no, no any other business come before the board here. Okay, how about adjourned?
Motion.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.